I don't know.
No matter what age your child is, you want the best for their future. What do they want to do after graduation? What career path do they want to take? These questions can be overwhelming. That's why you should ask them this question. What's your E? Seminole County Public Schools' ePathway program is designed for your student to choose their own path in life from as many options as we can offer. Whether they're looking to enlist, enroll, or be employed, we're excited to help you and your child make it happen. Want them to enroll in a college or university? We'll help you find the best school for them to continue their education. Learn about grants and programs to help your child obtain their degree at a pace and a cost that works for you both. Are they looking to go straight into employment? Discover a variety of trades and skills that will propel their future. They can learn aviation maintenance, automotive repair, culinary arts, and more to hone their talents in growing industries. Is your child interested in enlistment? We'll help them find the right path of service, whether it's military, law enforcement, fire response, or EMS. They can serve the community while learning skills that will last a lifetime. What's your E? Explore options with ePathways by visiting us online at the link below.
What inspired me to get into engineering was LEGO. So I started as a kid, as most kids do, working with Legos and just kind of doing your own thing, building the LEGO sets. And I would often take apart my LEGO sets, mix them together, and build something completely new. Then, in about 4th grade, I was introduced to Lego Robotics, which is where you have an actual robot that you could program. And you start with this brick, and that would feed information to LEGO motors. And it would all communicate as a system, and you could do a lot of really cool robotic tasks with that. And that was really the start of me looking into engineering. The engineering I'm looking to pursue at first is mechanical engineering. This is what I'm going to go to UCF for, and this is going to be the start of my career. A mechanical engineer can really do anything. They work with a lot of thermodynamics and a lot of vibrations and really just anything that moves. So a lot of fields use mechanical engineering. I wanted to go past that and specialize into biomedical engineering, which is more along the lines of surgical robotics and medical machinery. I wanted to develop surgical robots, and with that, I need to know exactly how the human body functions and how it functions with robotic systems. Essentially, I'll be able to design a system where a person will be able to communicate with a motor and hopefully improve their quality of life, whether this be through a surgical robot that a doctor is controlling, or whether it's prosthetic that's motorized.
I taught Josh his freshman year. He was so good with that inventor material. He picked up on it very quickly. He was ready to jump in and help other students, which I really, really appreciated. And he has carried those characteristics with him as he has moved through the program. And now, with his journey moving forward in bioengineering, I can't wait to see what he's going to make with his knee brace and the orthotics that he's trying to produce.
The current prosthetic I'm looking at developing is a load-bearing knee brace in which I'm going to take a motor or servo and attach that to the knee, which will enable the, a person to be able to push past what their muscles currently are able to do, whether that be because of muscle fatigue or osteoarthritis in the kneecap where they're not able to put a lot of pressure on their knee. Current knee braces really only work when walking. There's still a lot of pain when there's extra forces being applied to the knee, such as walking upstairs or standing up from sitting down, things you and I normally don't think about. But for someone that has severe arthritis in their knee, this is hugely painful.
The strongest advantages of project-based learning, that hands-on experience that allows you to manipulate that material, really solidifies in the brain exactly how those things work.
The thing I would say about this program where it exceeds the most is the more you use it, the more it'll benefit you.
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many excited faces. I am now reconvening the February 4th School Board meeting. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Dr. Shankard Harold, who is going to introduce our student invoker. Thank you. Good evening.
My honor to introduce just a student who is just an exceptional student, but also an exceptional human. You will hear just a little bit about Avanish Pooti, who is one of our students over at Sci-High, but he is here to provide tonight's invocation. So at this point, Avi, it's all you.
Are you recording, Mom? Good evening. My name is Avanish Pooti. Some of you may know me as Avi. I'm here today to provide my perspective, not only as a student at Sci-High, but also someone who's experienced firsthand the transformative power of education in our district. Before I start, I'd like to thank the School Board and Dr. Shankard Harold for this opportunity to come to speak to you all. When I first entered the Seminole County Public School System, I was in 7th grade, fresh off the plane from New Jersey, trading my winter coat for some sunscreen and flip-flops. Little did I know that the biggest change wasn't the weather in my life, but rather what happened in my 3rd quarter when COVID hit. I spent my entire 8th grade year remote, but what truly impressed me was how our district rose to meet those unprecedented challenges. Teachers quickly adapted to their teaching methods, staff worked tirelessly to ensure every student had access to technology, and our community came together to support one another in ways I had never seen before. Even through those challenging times, SCPS showed incredible resilience and commitment to the student's success. Then, high school appeared around the horizon, and during my tour of Sci-High, something caught my eye. It was a car. But not just any car. This was a student-built electric car. Pretty sweet. It was very different from what I was used to. The project-based learning approach, as explained to me by a student who is clearly loving it at Sci-High, told me I should definitely go there. So I did. And freshman year threw me right in the deep end with an amazing opportunity to lead a collaboration with the Sanford Museum. Creating micromuseums taught me two things. One, I love taking charge of projects. And two, museum curators have the patience of saints. Then came sophomore year, when Dr. Kampa's business class changed everything for me. Through her guidance and our participation in the Wharton Investment Competition, I discovered my calling to entrepreneurship. Thanks to the ePathways Internship Expo, this led to an accounting internship at Wharton Smith, where I learned how many, how large firms manage their finances. And yes, those numbers really do have that many zeros. Junior year brought me into a world of mock trials and legal studies. And returning to the ePathways Expo for Round 2, I managed to receive four internships. Simply the best and be the change today, two of those, excuse me, two of those internships helped me discover the ins and outs of HR and nonprofits respectively. This experience was crucial to my dream of being an entrepreneur. Now, as I stand here halfway through my senior year, I'm excited to share that I've been accepted into the University of Miami's Entrepreneurship Program, my dream school. Thank you so much. Looking back, I realize that without SCPS and the incredible staff at Sci-High, I might still be that kid from Jersey wondering what to do with his life, instead of the future business owner standing before you today. Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to invite everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. What a promising future you have. Thanks for sharing with us. Let the record reflect that Vice Chair Autumn Garrick, Board Member Kelly Davis, Board Member Dr. Robin Dellinger, Board Member Sanchez are all in attendance, along with Superintendent Beeman, Board Attorney Cole Palmer, and our Board Clerk, Famous Jill Moreamus. Ms. Moreamus, do we have any acknowledgement forms today? No acknowledgements. Okay. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Chair, I do. The addendum for a good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named Addendum Item, and I am pulling Items 6H and 4I from the agenda. So that's 6H, RFP for Insurance Consulting, and 4I, the RFP for Professional Legislative Advocacy, from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, this evening's roll call order is Member Davis, Member Sanchez, Vice Chair Garrick, Member Dellinger, and then myself. Let's go through roll call order for any agenda modifications. Member Davis. Member Sanchez.
No modifications, thank you.
Vice Chair Garrick.
No modifications, Chair.
Member Dellinger. And I have no modifications. Is there a motion to approve the agenda outline?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Any opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent, do we have presentations and recognitions?
Yes, we have lots of celebrations tonight. We'll start with a presentation regarding our Veteran of the Month, and it is an ESE teacher from Markham Woods, Ms. Hamilton, and she will be introduced by Principal Dr. McDonald.
Thank you. Board members, will you join me?
All right. Ms. Hamilton was born in Orlando, Florida. At the age of 18, she joined the US Army as an MP, Military Police. She completed her basic training and advanced individual training at Fort McClellan, Alabama, was then stationed at Fort Bragg, North Carolina. While at Fort Bragg, she served with the 118th Military Police Company under the 503rd Military Police Battalion for six years. In 1998, she was deployed to Panama for six months, leaving behind her 10-month-old daughter in the care of her father. During her military service, she achieved the rank of Specialist and was honored with numerous awards for her dedication and service. In addition to her military career, she pursued education and earned an Associate's Degree in Art and an Associate's Degree in General Education from Fayetteville Technical Community College, a Bachelor's Degree in Social Work from the University of North Carolina in Pembroke, and a Master's Degree in Social Work from the University of Central Florida. In 2008, she relocated to Seminole County, Florida. She began her journey in education in 2015 and started substitute teaching in Seminole County, specializing in life skills education, long-term assignments, and working as an ESE teacher. Currently, she's employed at Markham Woods Middle School, where she has been a dedicated part of the team since 2017, initially as a long-term substitute and now as an ESE self-contained academic teacher. She is married to Maurice Howard Hamilton, and together, she shared a blended family of seven children, four girls and three boys, and six grandchildren, two granddaughters and four grandsons, with one grandson on the way February 7th, 2025.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Celebration of Excellence in Career and Technical Education. My name is Ally Hilliard, and I am the Coordinator of Career and Technical Education for ePathways. Tonight, we have the honor of celebrating the dedication, passion, and achievement of our CTE Students of the Year, who have demonstrated exceptional skills, leadership, and a commitment to shaping their future careers. Students, please come forward when your name is called. From Crum's Academy of Technology, from the Program of Information Technology, Jaden Mathis. Jaden exemplifies dedication and excellence consistently struck. Okay, Jaden. Jaden's exceptional work ethic has earned him multiple Programmer of the Month awards, and he is actively involved in extracurricular activities and volunteering that benefits both Crum's Academy and the community, clearly beyond. His respectfulness and conscientiousness make him a standout individual who consistently exceeds expectations. Congratulations, Jaden. From Hagerty High School, from the Early Childhood Education Program, Gianna DiGiore. Gia is a self-motivated leader in the Husky Pups Preschool, consistently demonstrating initiative and dedication. She takes pride in mentoring other students, offering guidance and support that fosters their growth and confidence. Her positive attitude and exemplary behavior make her a role model, inspiring both her peers and the young children in the preschool. Congratulations, Gia. From Lake Brantley High School, in the Academy of Finance, we have Lillian Bachelor. Lillian has achieved an extraordinary number of certifications and has served as an additional addition financial teller for three years, showcasing her dedication and expertise. She further distinguished herself by interning with a Big Four accounting firm, gaining invaluable experience. Additionally, Lillian has represented Lake Brantley through BPA for all four years, consistently. Consistently qualifying for state and national competitions. Congratulations, Lillian. From Lake Howell High School, in multiple programs, barbering, entrepreneurship, early childhood education through dual enrollment, Lenaya Adams. She has excelled in all of her CTE subjects, completing three years each in cosmetology and barbering, as well as four years in entrepreneurship. With an impressive GPA, she consistently demonstrates academic and professional dedication. She also actively volunteers after hours, offering her time and support to the programs in which she is involved. Congratulations, Lenaya. From Lake Mary High School, in the Programming Foundations of Web Design Programs, Tyler Oliva. Tyler has successfully completed CTE industry certifications in web design and information technology, demonstrating his technical proficiency. This school year, he led the Web Design Area Business Partnership Program, where he and his team develop websites for local businesses. As the student managing leader, he showcased strong vision, initiative, collaboration skills, dependability, and in-depth subject knowledge. Congratulations, Tyler. From Lyman High School, in the Early Childhood Education Program, Brienne Bowman. Brienne was elected as Skills USA Florida State President for the 24-25 school year. She has already visited Washington DC to advocate for CTE. Yay! Participated in the Skills USA Florida Leadership Training Institute, and will soon travel to Tallahassee to meet with senators and representatives. As a member of the Early Childhood Education Program and Lyman's Leadership Program, she excels in both academics and leadership, earning her a candidacy for the Child Development Associate credential while inspiring others in her role as a mentor and advocate for CTE. From Oviedo High School, in Interior Design and Early Childhood Education, Brielle Friedman. Brielle is a two-program completer in Early Childhood and Interior Design, demonstrating her versatility and commitment to both fields. She serves as an officer for Future Educators of America, was a founding member of the Design Club, and is actively involved in other organizations. Known for her helpfulness, preparedness, and positive attitude, Brielle constantly goes above and beyond expectations and is set to complete her CDA industry certification this quarter. Congratulations, Brielle. From Sci-High in Digital Design, this should come as no surprise, Avi Pooti. Avi has created almost all of the school's marketing videos and leads the design sprint team for middle school visits. He enthusiastically takes on every challenge offered by the school's programs and uses all of the resources available to solve problems that arise. He trains new students to use technology as well. He clearly exemplifies the programs that Sci-High has to offer. Congratulations, Avi. From Seminole County Virtual School, in the Hospitality and Tourism Management Program, Lindsay Weber. Lindsay is a senior who has dedicated herself to excellence throughout her high school career, taking every course available and participating in every competition. Her commitment has led her to represent SCVS at the state level, where she showcased her skills and leadership. As a result of her hard work and determination, she has been accepted into the prestigious UCF Rosen Program, where she will continue to pursue her passion. Congratulations, Lindsay. From Seminole High School, in the Nurse Assistant Program, McKenna Arnott. McKenna has excelled in every aspect of our high school career. She is intrinsically motivated and possesses wisdom beyond her years. This translates into the CTE arena as a confident practitioner that possesses problem-solving skills, stellar communication ability, if you've ever been on a tour, she's likely been your tour guide, and personal responsibility actions. To round out her Nursing Assistant Program, she projects empathy and compassion to all those in her care. Congratulations, McKenna. And last, but certainly not least, from Winter Springs High School, in the Culinary Program, Alex Gonzalez. Alex has been dedicated to the culinary field for the past three years and throughout his academic journey, has consistently excelled every quarter, and has demonstrated remarkable growth in his leadership abilities each year. In his senior year, he has not only taken on every leadership role within the program, but has organized, led, the after-school and catering events. His peers highly respect him, seek his guidance, and his skills are a testament to the real-world experience he has mastered. Maybe you'll get to sample some of this this Friday at the Chili Cook-Off. Alex embodies the ideal CTE student, combining academic excellence, leadership, and practical schools. Congratulations, Alex. At this time, we'd like to have all of our CTE Students of the Year up for a group picture.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recognize schools that have been put exemplary work into their implementing Tier One for a PBI. Okay. Oh, they are transitioning, okay. That's okay. All right. So, once again, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize schools that have exemplary work in implementing Tier One with fidelity in maintaining low discipline rates in the 2023-24 school year. This year, I am proud to say that we have 20 schools. Last year, from 16 to 20 schools that will be recognized tonight for Model School. We have Silver Model Schools, which Tier One fidelity, low discipline rates, and no significantly disproportionate data. Also, we will have Bronze Schools, which has Tier One with fidelity. But first, before we bring up the schools, I would like to acknowledge Jason Lobley, who's the Florida PBIS Project Facilitator, who supports me. In his absence, he would like to provide a congratulations.
Good evening, Superintendent Beeman and School Board members. My name is Jason Lobley. I'm a Technical Assistant Specialist with Florida's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Project at the University of South Florida. I'm fortunate to be able to collaborate with Jennifer Smith, your PBIS District Coordinator, and many fantastic schools in Seminole County. Unfortunately, I'm not able to make the board meeting tonight, as I did last year, due to travel, but I wanted to send a message of thanks and congratulations for the great work that's been accomplished with PBIS in Seminole County. A PBIS Model School Award is one that exemplifies best practices in PBIS and shows improved student behavioral outcomes. An award like this is not one that is easily attained. Your schools that were awarded with Model School recognition for the 23-24 school year focused on high fidelity of implementation while using their discipline data to ensure that their Tier One systems had positive outcomes for their students. Once again, congratulations to your 23-24 Model Schools on this outstanding achievement, and thanks again to Jennifer and your PBIS implementers across Seminole County.
So first, I would like to recognize the Silver Model Schools, the first school. If you would come up and get your plaque, and then at the end, we will do a group photo. All right. Hagerty High School. So, they are not present. South Seminole. So those were all of our Silver Model Schools, and now we're going to move to Bronze Model Schools.
Rainbow. It's over, rainbow.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And last but not least for the last bronze is Wilson Elementary. They are not here, but if you guys can come up so we can get a group picture with your
All right, we're going to continue with the meeting. Hint, hint, not so subtle. Superintendent and school board members, it is my honor to introduce the new coordinator of MSAP Grant at South Seminole Academy in the E Pathways Department, Ms. Paula Hagan. With over 20 years of teaching experience and administration across various school settings and in three states, Paula holds a master's degree in educational administration from Kent State University. Ms. Hagan has led strategic initiatives like Leap Course Development, SCPS Computer Science 2020, and career and technical education programs like Hospitality and Tourism Management at SCVS. Significantly advancing district educational practices, her expertise in project management, instructional design, and innovative solutions has fostered learning by empowering educators and students alike. With her tonight is her incredible husband, Erin Hagan, and her amazing daughter Florence Hagan, who is a sixth grader at Lawton Childs Middle School. Come on down.
Thank you, Dr.
Good evening, Superintendent. We have a focus on student achievement today.
Yes, we do, and we're carrying through what our theme and celebrating our CTE this week, and so our focus on student achievement will be introduced by Dr. Garth Harold and the amazing E Pathways team.
So, good evening. I'm a bit of a ball hog tonight, I apologize. So, we are thrilled to be celebrating CTE Month and National School Counseling Week with you and with some amazing professionals to my left. So, immediately to my left, of course, you all know Dr. Williams, who is our coordinator for school counseling, Marissa Ellis, who is one of our school counselors on assignment, Kristin Thol, who is one of our E Pathways facilitators, and Vicky Lampy, who is another one of our E Pathways facilitators, and they are going to help paint the picture of our career planning options that we provide in Seminole County Public Schools. So, career planning is not just about preparing students for their first job, it's about equipping them with the tools that they need to navigate a lifetime of opportunities. So, this is not about just preparing for that first job, this is about preparing for all of the potential that might lie ahead. So, when we talk about why do we engage in career planning, it's because we want our students to make those determinations as early as possible so that they are making effective, efficient, and wise decisions about what the future holds for them. And how do they do that? They do that with amazing CTE teachers, they do that with amazing school counselors who provide them with the guidance, the support, and the cheerleading that they need in order to be whatever it is that they aspire to be. As you heard from Avi earlier tonight, Avi says he's going to be a business owner, and I have no doubt that one day we will all be working for him. So, we are just so proud of our students. When do we do this? You'll find out some things tonight that you probably didn't know, but we are now engaging in career exploration as early as kindergarten, and Ms. Ellis will share with you some of the work that she's been doing. And we're doing this in whatever way is appropriate for our students, so it could be through work-based learning, it could be through internships, it could be through CTE programs. Not all of our students that participate in an internship have gone fully through a CTE program, but there are students who have expressed an interest and that's their path. And as you'll recall, the E Pathways Department was built on the power of yes, and so our job is to say yes to our students anytime we can. So, we will go through some of our CTE programs as well as how we support individualized student planning, and at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Williams, who will provide you with an update on school counseling and the American School Counseling Association pilot.
So, hopefully you can hear me. So, first of all, happy National School Counseling Week to all of our counselors. We saw many of them tonight supporting PBIS and supporting other initiatives at their school. And with the support of our superintendent and school board, we're participating in the American School Counseling Association, otherwise known as ASCA, pilot. This pilot is worth $500,000 in training over the next two years, and it's enhancing direct services through comprehensive K through 12 planning, which aligns with the key performance indicator in the district's strategic plan to increase direct services
Examples of... Examples of school counseling, direct services, and career awareness start as early as elementary school. Elementary school counselors utilize their appraisal and advisement strategies to guide students in making connections between their personal interests, career clusters, and related coursework. Playful Pathways is an exciting new opportunity for students in grades K through 2 to receive classroom lessons on career clusters that align to their personal interests. Students are then able to participate in the culminating event, the Playful Pathways event, where they engage in meaningful play that is developmentally appropriate and serves to expose them to the world of work. Students and families are then encouraged to extend their exploration by accessing Zello, an online tool designed for career exploration in K through 12. In addition, through collaboration with our E Pathways College and Career Specialists, school counselors are implementing middle school pathway planning lessons in grades 3 through 5. These lessons allow students to complete an interest inventory and research careers in Zello to help them connect their interests with potential career paths. School counselors use this information then to guide our students in making connections between their interests, middle school course selection, potential magnet programs, and CTE course opportunities, thereby helping them build a meaningful pathway towards achieving their career goals.
We have three main components in middle school career planning. We have our LEAP courses, which LEAP is an acronym for the three course series offered to our middle school students, Learning Pathways, Exploring Pathways, and Advancing Pathways. We also provide work-based learning opportunities and other CTE courses. In our middle school LEAP courses, we give our students real-world experiences and hands-on learning to help them discover what they love, explore different careers, and build important life skills so they feel confident about their future and ready for success in high school, college, and jobs right here in our own community. All students are required to develop a career plan in the Zello platform while in these courses, which guide them to working with their school counselors on selecting the most appropriate individual pathway as they enter high school. When visiting a LEAP classroom recently, the students were engaged and excited about their hands-on, their in-class activity, and when asked about the lesson, the teacher said, "We've been working on creating digital vision boards to creatively keep track of their short and long-term goals." She said this lesson builds self-awareness and brings their goals to life with this fun activity. Additionally, our middle school students are getting real-world exposure through work-based learning opportunities, including guest speaking, guest speakers in the classroom, and field trips, both in-person and virtually. Our teachers have had guest speakers ranging from NASA, from Spirit Airlines, financial institutions, and local entrepreneurs, as well as small business owners. One of our middle school teachers, Jody Stella, from Millennium Middle School, invited her school counselor, Ms. Quan Shinay McConaco, to come visit her classroom. This was very special. Ms. McConaco came to talk about her experiences as an Army reservist, which was such an asset to share with the students. Finally, our additional varied middle school CTE courses introduce students to exciting career pathways like culinary, robotics, personal finance, TV production, all targeted for sparking interest early. These students are invited to explore a variety of career opportunities through interactive lessons and collaborative learning, such as Guess the Job games like Pictionary, Charades, and learning about the engineering design process by participating in a Pyramid Cup Challenge. Teachers also provide students opportunities to prepare for the digital tool certifications through games like Jeopardy, where they gain valuable skills and showcase their expertise in areas such as presentation skills, web design, and as well, using the Google Office Suite. Thank you so much.
At the high school level, career planning comes to life as students connect their interests and skills with tangible opportunities. Through work-based learning, diverse CTE course offerings, and industry certifications, students graduate with more than just a diploma. They leave prepared for success in both college and careers. Work-based learning opportunities, such as internships, job shadowing, and apprenticeship programs, allow students to gain real-world experience, develop professional skills, and build connections with industry leaders. Events like college and career fairs and the internship expo further expose students to potential career pathways and post-secondary options. CTE course offerings provide hands-on, career-focused education that aligns with high-demand industries. This year, student feedback and a ninth-grade career planning survey administered by our school counselors helped guide the development of three new high school programs: Global Finance at Lake Brantley High School, Agriculture/Bio-Technology at Oviedo High School, and firefighting at Winter Springs High School, further expanding student exposure to in-demand career fields. Industry certifications validate students' technical skills and give them a competitive edge in the workforce. These credentials allow students to graduate with job-ready qualifications that can lead to immediate employment or advanced standing in post-secondary education. When students register for future courses, they meet one-on-one with their school counselors. These meetings go beyond simple credit checks. Counselors use this time to engage students in meaningful discussions about career aspirations, dual enrollment opportunities, and long-term planning. By integrating CTE with school counseling, we're equipping students with the skills, knowledge, and confidence to succeed in a rapidly changing world.
So, board members, in closing, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, so my leadership strategy has always been surround yourself with really smart people and get out of the way. And I think what's evidenced by the individuals sitting at this table and several others behind me, I've been very blessed to sit alongside some really brilliant people and watch them do really amazing work for kids, so we're just very grateful to have them and their work and their brains so committed to our kids. By combining the strengths of CTE and school counseling, we inspire our students to dream big, plan wisely, and achieve extraordinary futures. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so, so much. If you'll just sit tight for one minute, and I'm going to go down the roll call to see if board members have questions. So, we'll start with Member Davis. Any questions or thoughts?
No questions. Thank you guys so much for bringing this to us. We hear about it all the time, I get to see it when we go out to the schools, and it's just amazing. I don't know any other district that provides this amount of career education.
Agree. Member Sanchez, thank you.
Same thing. Thank you so much for everything you do day in and day out, and to all of our programs that we have in place that help our children through the E Pathways. I mean, I feel like I watched it since infancy, how we started this, and all the opportunities that our children have, it's just so exciting. I wish I had all that when I was growing up, and so kudos to everyone and all the phenomenal teachers behind the scenes that make this possible, too.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time to share how we're setting up CTE in elementary and middle school. The Aviation and Aerospace Day was phenomenal, it was great to see all of the littles there getting excited about what is to come, but knowing that there are so many opportunities available in the primary grades is very exciting. Additionally, I love the synergy between counseling and CTE. We were all honored to meet the counselors of the year, and so I know you're doing phenomenal work, I can't wait to hear. Now, you're in year one of our...
Yes, we are. Year one and doing a lot of data-informed work. The counselors are working really hard, but I'm excited to see the outcomes.
Me, too. So, we'll keep posted. Thank you so much, Dr. Williams.
Member Dallinger, any comments?
Well, just to say, keep on doing it. And also, now that I know about Zello, I'm going to have to be questioning my kindergarten and first grade grandchildren about their career paths. Thank you very much.
Pouring them in, we'll take them.
I was going to ask, is that program accessible to the general public? Okay. Because my granddaughter, I don't know if she's bossy or has leadership skills, but maybe both, but I'm thinking this is something I want to encourage her parents. You know, we've been into classrooms when first graders are dressed like little surgeons and they're dissecting compound words, and, I mean, we see it, we see the hard work, and I'm just so grateful for our students to have these opportunities. Thank you all so, so much. We appreciate you.
Okay, it is now time for board items, excuse me, board committee reports. If you had any committee meetings, I'm switching it up, I hope that's okay. We're going to do it first this time, and we'll start with Member Davis. Do you have any committee meetings since only two weeks ago? Okay, Member Sanchez.
So, the one big meeting I had that is really important, and I'm going to discuss it with all of you, and I think I shared some of it with you already, FSBA, Florida School Board Association Advocacy Meeting. There are a lot of new tools out there, and I didn't realize that we were going to talk about it. There are a lot of new tools out there, and I didn't realize that we were going to talk about this one first, but for anyone that's listening or that's here, please visit the Florida Gov. site. It's a new site, the, the new icon that's there. You can watch any bill that you want to at any given time, and you get updates before it even hits the news. So, if you create an account, it's free by putting your email address in, then you decide what areas that you're interested in. If it's education, healthcare, whatever you're interested in, you don't want to click on too many, or you're going to get a ton of emails. But it's a great tool to use, and you'll be able to see and keep up with the update on that. Also wanted to share that we discussed some other strategies and tools in preparing us for, to go to Tallahassee if approved. Dr. Dillinger and I will be heading to Tallahassee, and I'm also heading there with the League of Women Voters. But thefloridasenate.gov has changed their website to match with the Florida Gov., Florida House site, so now they're the same. And then, of course, remember thefloridachannel.org. If you don't want to watch something live, but you want to watch it later on, everything is recorded and stays in archive. This way, you can see what's going on in committees, and I really want everybody to get involved and really see what's going on. It's extremely critical right now that we get our voices heard, and people send out letters, try to make them personable, try to hook up with their local legislators as much as possible. It's extremely critical. And if anybody wants any further information or any of the slides, just email me, and I'll be more than happy to share any of the different websites and the PowerPoint presentations, or it was recorded, and I will be more than happy to, to share that. So, one interesting, and like I said, this is still early, so draft stages were due last week on Wednesday, so bills have really not been processed yet, and it's still really pretty early, and we still have only one month left before it opens up. And I do want to mention one bill that's, makes me super excited, and I'm hoping this, this goes through, and I hope, Minnie, you're there, I see you. One that I have been pushing, and I know you'll be super excited about this one, is ESOL students taking their test in their native language. And there seems to be a lot of push for that, so I'm watching, that one's already got a companion bill for it, too. So, please feel free to reach out for me, to me. Also, on the zoo board, really haven't had anything, but this is a time, if you haven't started registering your kids for spring break, summer, spring break camps, the zoo has some phenomenal camps over the spring break that are hands-on activities engaged with teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair, for appointing me to the Foundation Committee. It was very exciting to go to our first, to our, my inaugural meeting. We're currently planning the strategic, strategic plan, say it five times fast, for the next five years. So, it was fascinating listening to a variety of stakeholders, including business owners, parents, and community leaders. More on the Foundation. I just got a, an update today that there are, there is $150,000 in scholarships from the Foundation open to Seminole County Public Schools seniors. So, having, just having our guidance counselors here, or all of our counselors, but guidance counselors will have those details, and I'll make sure to post it on my social media, and no doubt it will also be on the Foundation's social media. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to, to pass you along to those applications. Additionally, this past weekend on Saturday was the Kick for Kids Kickball Tournament by our teachers and schools. They each contributed $10 per person. They had teams, I believe we had 10 teams, and all of that money, they got to get together, they had great big kickball tournament. It was really fun. I went out there and cheered them on, but all of that money went to the Foundation's Tools for Schools, which is just really heartwarming, because not only are these teachers receiving tools that they need in their classroom every single day, but then they're taking their time, personal time, to give back and make sure that the, the program can continue. So, it was really heartwarming. I did miss a Sanford Leader Meeting. I know Dr. Dillinger and I had wanted to go. It was the Cradles to Careers Task Force. So, we've got a group of Sanford Leaders that are committed to, to making sure that we support education. They understand how vital education is to the success of individuals, about breaking the school-to-prison pipeline, and education can completely change the trajectory of not just families, but an entire community. So, I look forward with Dr. Dillinger's help to continue to, to champion this effort. And that's it for my committees.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair, will you share information as you get it regarding that committee? Thank you, both of you, thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Dillinger, Member Dillinger, you're up.
I did not have any meetings since the last time we met, any official school, school board committees, but I will be attending the Florida School Boards Association School Finance Forum in Gainesville on Thursday and Friday, so I expect to come back from there with the expertise in school finance.
Perfect. Thank you so much. My committees, the Value Adjustment Board was rescheduled to May 6th, which I will participate in. Orlando Science Center meets next Monday. They, too, are having a spring break camp, and if you look online, I encourage you to, to register early because they, they do fill up. They have a whole week of STEM activities and really good things going on there. And my Federal Advocacy and Relations Meeting is this Thursday, so I'll report next time. And that concludes committee reports at this time. It's now time for public comments. We don't have any agenda items, but Vice Chair, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and read the statement, please, regarding public comments.
Certainly. "The purpose of the public participation segments of the meeting is to allow the public to address matters within the board's jurisdiction and not to resolve individual grievances or disputes. Public comments related to education, the board agenda, and the district are welcome and encouraged, but public comment segments are not forums to engage in personal attacks against school system employees or board members. To maintain orderly conduct, the public comment segments of the meeting may not be used as open forums to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, including presentation of political and/or campaign issues, announcing candidacy and/or campaigning, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the board or the public. Nor are they forums to address matters involving disciplinary actions of any kind, pending claims, complaints, or litigation against the district or district personnel. Public comment segment durations are as follows: Agenda items, limited to three minutes; one group representative speaking on a proposition, maximum of six minutes; speaker must remain on topic for agenda item proposition; non-agenda items, limited to two minutes; speakers shall address their comments only to the board and may not address the audience or other speakers. No speaker may yield his or her time to any other person. Generally, substitutions of speakers will not be allowed."
Thank you so much. Ms. Maramus, we don't have any new topic, okay. So, Superintendent, it is now time for the Consent Agenda. Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, that the Consent Agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, moved and second, you've got it. Is there any discussion? Okay, calling the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation regarding student discipline?
Yes, I do, that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from 113/2025 and 121/2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Have no unfinished, no new business. Superintendent, do you have a report?
Chair, my report is included in the book, and it's read-only, but I do want to say thank you to you all. We have had a very busy last couple of days celebrating some really, really great employees. Want to say congratulations to our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Hawker from Endeavor, and our Employee of the Year, Ms. Romanek. And thank you all, and we've had some very joyous celebrations of all of our employees throughout the district, but I'm really, really proud of our Teacher of the Year and our Employee of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, there are some other photos I guess we're going to share. Excellent. And bravo to all of our nominees. It's really tough for the committee to, to make this election. Okay, it is now time for Board Comments Non-Committee. And if someone covers an event, I would ask that you skip over that one and, and mention another one. We have been going, I think on Saturday, there were four or five events to attend, so I know we've all been running. Starting with you, Member Davis, commit, just your outside events that you've attended.
Aviation program over at the airport, where some of our high schools, Seminole State College, a lot of the other, the other schools in the area, all made presentations, they had demonstrations. We saw all of the airplanes out there, just a couple of helicopters out there, and you were able to tour them. And they were just fantastic to the kids. I brought my granddaughter up there, and, you know, they, they put the back sack on her so she could feel how heavy it is, you know, their fighter suit, and it, it was just great, and it was a lot of community activity out there. It was really, really special. A lot of good pictures in front of the jets, so I would have, I would remind you next year to go. We're also going to have over there the, the actual flights soon, isn't it soon? It's in, it's in the summer. So, check out the airport. The other thing is I went to Highlands Leadership Program, along with the other school board members were there with me. We were toured through some of the classrooms at the elementary school by the students. They definitely showed great leadership, clear communication, and they were definitely excited. And we went around, there were teachers from other parts of the country that came to join us, where they were using Highlands Elementary as an example of the programs that we do have here in elementary school and the leadership abilities of our students. So, it was really great. The kids had a great time. They were so proud of themselves, too, and we had a great time.
Thank you so much. Member Sanchez.
Along that line with the Leader in Me program that we have, it's just phenomenal to see our students engage and carry on conversations, but having so many, over 60 administrators, teachers from all over the country just embraced everything that we were doing in our schools, they were just extremely impressed. So, kudos to Ms. Gonzalez and to the whole entire staff as well as the students for doing a great job. A couple of different things that I know everybody's got so many different things that we could talk about, but I'm going to, I know that I had Dr. Sean Gard-Herald and Sarita Superintendent Beeman join me Saturday night to our Seminole Cultural Arts Gala, Taste of the Arts. So, thank you for joining us. It was sold out for the first time in many years, and we, this year, embedded our students to do different things. So, we had the culinary arts students preparing food, and they were all there. And then, we had the art students from Lake Howell as well with Ms. Rivas doing the art programs, and we had people there all the way until the very end. It was just amazing, and I think I'm done making baskets. Then, I, I wanted to mention, last night, we had the Juvenile of the Year Awards. All of us were there in attendance. Longwood City Commissioners do this every year. It's really cool. We were talking about seeing if other municipalities want to do it, but we, they celebrated over 20 students, maybe, and shared the essays of why they were special and what they do in the community, and they were all super excited. So many are like, "I want to get a picture with Superintendent Beeman. This is going to be my only chance I'm going to get a picture." They were so excited. So, thank you for being there. It was really exciting for the kids. They really enjoyed it. We have so much going on and so many different things. I don't want everybody, anybody to forget that our phenomenal students, the Jet students are doing their Valentine Sale. If you hadn't had a chance, if you want to purchase balloons, they have the, the bundle package with stuffed animals and chocolate. You can have it delivered to your child's school, or administrator or teacher to say thank you, or someone up here in the, you know, county office, wherever. They will deliver it, sales are until, pre-sales until February 10th, and it's on our website. SGA, Mr. Rice and I had an opportunity to speak to SGA at Lake Brantley with all the students, and I was able to grab a couple of students that will come up to Tallahassee with me when I go on my own time to help advocate for some other things. Thank you so much to Orlando Health for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, for our Wellness Center. We could not be happier than now we have a facility right at the Orlando Health Building on 434, at the hospital, right at Suite 306 and the building next to it. Did a phenomenal job, so thank you for everyone that had a part of that. I wanted to, you know, I know you all thank Dr. Williams and her phenomenal staff, all the guidance counselors, but with it being Counselor Appreciation Month, I just want to give an extra shout-out to all of our counselors for everything they do day in and day out, and, and really reaching our children and, and making the difference and the impact that they're doing. Also, don't want you to forget Kid Zone and Beyond. We'll also have a spring break camp. I'm not even sure if it's filled up yet, but go ahead and make sure that you sign up. BPK enrollment starts in two days, February 7th, so don't forget that. That's very important. I wanted to do a shout-out for, since I sit on the State PTA Board, our new Executive Director of the Florida PTA is Misa Mills.
Oh, wow.
So, yes. So, super happy for her. And Misa, we miss you, but we are happy for your new endeavors and know you're going to do a phenomenal job. And then, last but not least, I wanted to mention that the Mental Health Alley's Hope Golf Tournament is coming up, and the more people can be involved in it, the more we can get funds to help with getting more mental health counselors in our schools. So, please reach out and, and do whatever you can to help us with all that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair.
As, as Member Sanchez and other board members have said, we've hit the ground running in January, dozens of events, many, I'm trying to get better about, about keeping them up on social media, giving shout-outs to our schools and to our folks. I did want to take a moment to discuss the challenges of the past two weeks. I've taken some notes to try to keep me focused, but throughout our district, we have had many concerns. I've had many phone calls from parents, from teachers, from community members, and I want to say thank you. Thank you for reaching out. Thank you for entrusting me to, to tell it to you straight, to explain where we are, and to make sure that everybody in our community knows that our students and their success is always our North Star. I'd like to say a special thank you to, to the Cabinet and to all of the folks in administration and to our teachers who show great tenacity and resilience and flexibility, because that's the name of the game. I am an elected constitutional officer, and so as such, I want you to know that I take my oath to uphold the state and the federal constitutions very seriously. Public education is such a core... Public education is such a core value of Floridians that it is embedded into our constitution. If you haven't read the Florida Constitution lately, I know that we've got some historians here that may and some folks that majored in history, but I wanted to read just a bit. "The education of children is a fundamental value of the state of Florida. It is a paramount duty of the state to make adequate provisions for the education of all children residing within its border. In Seminole County, we are a model of excellence and a shining example of all that is right with public education. We are an A-rated academically high-performing rated number one by Niche District, which means that whether you have children in our district or not, you benefit. We are the key economic driver to our region. The reason why people move to Seminole County is because of the schools." And we all benefit from that. It means that our property values stay strong. It means that our cities are well-funded. We have strong firefighter forces and police forces, and there is still work to do. And it's going to take more than your elected leaders. It's going to take more than the people leading at our school. It takes all of us, because while we have such great accolades, the truth is, we still have an academic gap between those kids living in poverty and their affluent peers. And we can make a difference. It's going to take power, people power. I urge you, please, whether you have more time, more treasure, or more talent, share your wealth with us. Share your time. Share your talents. Share your treasure. We have a place to put you to work because together we can help close the achievement gap and make sure that Seminole County remains a beacon of excellence for all students regardless of their background or their zip code. And so our Clerk Jill, I know, has all of our business cards. If you'd like to reach out to us at any time, we're available by phone, we're available by email, but I urge you all to please try to quiet the noise and stay focused on our North Star. Floridians value students and public education, and so do we. And one more point of privilege. We all need our rocks. I'd like to say happy birthday to Bobby G., who is my rock and the rock of the Garrick Five.
Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Dellinger, you're up.
So there have been many, many events, as our other Board members have talked about, so I don't want to belabor all of those points, but there are a couple of things I would like to speak to. First of all, I attended Take Stock in Children mentoring meeting about two weeks ago, and at that meeting it was shared, and this number could have changed by now, 3,400 families in need. In other words, we have this many homeless students. So the need to support these students is growing, and support for them is critical so that they can learn and be successful students. I'd like to thank the Foundation for all the support it provides and also for the opportunity to be a part, a little part, of helping a student. Take Stock in Children will soon be welcoming a new group of students to begin work next year, and they are in need of mentors. So if you can support a student, please consider looking into the program and mentoring a student. While I've only been working as a mentor for about two years, I can tell you it is a wonderful experience, and I am very happy that I've been able to support a very special young lady at Seminole High School. I accompanied Ms. Beeman on school visits in the last couple of weeks. They were wonderful. Of note, there were individuals that were selected by their principals for the Superintendent Spark Awards. The teachers and the employees that were selected by both principals were really exceptional individuals, and what was noteworthy to me is they truly exemplify service to the students. It's almost overwhelming to me when these folks are recognized, and the teachers, and also, that many of them come to tears at the fact that they're being recognized with a plaque and a thank you. These are really incredible individuals that work with our students every day. The two students that we got to meet were both amazing children that have overcome very serious family and school challenges, and with the support of the teachers and the other folks in their schools, they have been able to achieve some amazing successes and become the spark for other students and adults in the school. They definitely sparked me, for sure. Also, Ms. Beeman included me in one of the luncheons that she holds for Teachers of the Year. She meets with them in small groups, and basically they share anything and everything. The one takeaway I have for that meeting that I would like to share is that the teachers express confidence in the measures that are taken to provide safety and security in our schools for our students and staff. And I wanted to share this because I want our partners with the Sheriff's Department and our municipalities, our SRDs and our SROs, to know how much we appreciate the fact that our teachers feel secure and safe in their school. Okay, so finally, and these were related to agenda items, if my math is correct, and probably want to check me on that, about 42% of our high school students will take one or more AP and/or IB course this spring, exam, this spring. Students that earn a passing score earn college credit, and they also save their parents' money when they go to college. They have fewer courses they have to pay for. Some students take three, four, and five exams, and this is a credit to this district for providing these opportunities, and it's also a credit to the teachers, the students, the parents, and the leaders that support these programs and these students. These are really outstanding opportunities for the students, and I think it's noteworthy that we're approaching 50% of our kids taking these exams. And then finally, the last item I wanted to mention is that 40 portables will arrive on the Lake Mary Elementary School campus over spring break in the very first phase of the Campus Replacement Project. I think it's going to be very exciting to see the transformation of that campus, and I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I would just like to add regarding your comments, students regarding the AP classes, students do not have to prequalify. We will accept any students into that program, and that is different from other districts. So kudos to all of those supporting that. Noncommittee reports, we all attended the All County Honors Band with the guest practitioners, and thank you Dr. Lindsay Williams for organizing. Thank you Winter Springs High for hosting us. They are phenomenal. I said to Vice Chair, "Just close your eyes, and it sounds like we're in a professional, you know, it could be the soundtrack for a theater program." It was amazing. I too have had many school visits. I'm looking forward to, this week we're going to middle school, and we'll also have a student forum, and you get some amazing feedback from those kids. They really don't want, they want pizza every day in the cafeteria usually. And that is my noncommittee reports, and it is now, it's now time for our public comments, non-agenda items. Right now I only have two speakers, is that correct, Clerk? Okay, thank you. Fiona Shannon and Jessica Tillman, please, if you'll make your way to the podium. Sorry, that came out way louder than I intended.
Never been first before. Good evening Superintendent Beeman and School Board members. I have been attending these meetings since 2018. I have witnessed them go from civil to often downright rude and embarrassing. The majority of people know how to behave, but a handful do not. I have attended committee meetings in Tallahassee with our state legislators. I have attended legislative delegation meetings in many counties, including Seminole. In fact, the most recent was just a few weeks ago. At all of these meetings, elected legislators are addressed and spoken to with respect. Meeting rules are followed. I ask myself why some speakers think it is okay to be so disrespectful to our elected school board and our Superintendent. Why they think it is acceptable to make personal attacks and allegations against those elected to serve our community and Superintendent Beeman. Would they speak to a panel of men in such a disrespectful manner? Not to mention the unhinged attacks on those of us who have been in attendance regularly for years. School Board is nonpartisan. Our children are watching. Be better. Show kindness. Treat people the way you want to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jessica Tillman?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Tillman. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Again, I want to say the kids that were celebrated earlier today are just fantastic. We should celebrate them 100%. The expansion of the CTE programs are just great to see. As I'm sure you're aware, we have elected Donald Trump in a landslide to lead our county. Even Seminole County voted for him. The people were loud and clear that we support his policies. He has moved quickly with several executive orders that will impact the district. I would like to start with the executive order that government agencies only recognize two sexes, male and female. He has also declared a one-flag policy, the American flag. All other flags must be removed. Another is to remove equity ideology. I have reviewed several policies, job descriptions, and the strategic plan all need to have be heavily revised, excuse me. Policy 2131, excellence and equity is an example of policies that need to be reviewed. And as a reminder, this policy is not a Neola policy. Continuing with equity policies will only remove funding. This district needs an innovative way to ensure we are following the executive orders. Children are no longer allowed to consent to chemical castration or chopping off of healthy body parts. Loving and supporting your kids is much different than allowing them to cause irreversible damage to themselves. If you have not heard of Detransitioners, you need to look it up. It is indeed rumored that the President will abolish the Department of Education. This will bring education back to the state where it belongs. This was a campaign promise, and I hope it is yet another promise he keeps. Our nation as a whole is in an education crisis. The NAEP just came out with the Nations Report Card, and it's very alarming. This district prides itself on national recognition, grade A schools, yet has wavering numbers and getting close to the state average. I implore this Board to think outside the box, prove you are the highly rated district that you claim to be.
Thank you.
You can leave your comments with the Clerk if you'd like. Okay, and with no further...
It's February. I thought perhaps one of my other Board members would bring it up, but I would just want to say it's Black History Month, and so as a storyteller, I know that stories connect us, and I would just like to encourage those that belong to the Black community to please share your stories, and those that do not belong to the Black community to please listen.
Thank you so much.
That's it.
Also, Board members, don't forget to sign up for the Foundation Arts Checks. If you haven't already, please respond to Ms. Van Smith. And with that, this meeting is adjourned at 7:00 to 3:00 p.m. Thank you all for coming.